All right, well, good evening, everyone. And welcome, I'll call this meeting to order. This is the November 21st, 2019 Sparks Planning Commission Meeting. It's good to see everyone again. Want to welcome everyone watching on Facebook Live and on Sparks Centennial TV. Apologize for the heater being out in the chambers this evening. So encourage everyone to think warm thoughts throughout the meeting today. We'll move on to item number two. That's a roll call. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kerry.
President.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Blakow.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Crispell.
Here.
Commissioner Vanderwell.
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Ornelas.
Here.
Thank you, full commission tonight. That's great. We'll move on to item number three. That's a public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to provide general public comment, something on our agenda or not on our agenda. Well, we have three minutes. I didn't receive any requests to speak in general comment, but if you have any general public comment, you're more than welcome to. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and we'll move on to our agenda. Approval of the agenda, item number four. Didn't think there were any corrections or changes with the commission care to take action on the agenda. Commissioner Vanderwell.
Move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the agenda submitted by Commissioner Vanderwell. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
I'll give the second to Commissioner Reed. Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda, second by... All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried, the agenda is approved. All right, we'll move into item number five, which is approval of the minutes. We have three separate sets of minutes to review tonight. The first one is the September 23rd Planning Commission and City Council Workshop with the commission care to take action on those sets of minutes.
Move to approve the joint workshop, September 23rd.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve September 23rd minutes by Commissioner Vanderwell. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Thank you. We have a second by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor of approval of the September 23rd meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Owe stain.
Okay, we have an abstention from Commissioner Peterson, because he wasn't present, I believe. Okay. Okay, the ayes have it, the motion is carried, and there's an abstention from Commissioner Peterson on that one. The next set of minutes are the meeting minutes from two weeks ago. My appreciation to staff for getting those turned around so quickly. First is our November 5th Planning Commission Study Session Minutes with the commission care to take action on those sets of minutes.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of November 5th.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the September 5th Planning Commission Study Session Minutes. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Oh.
A second by Commissioner Peterson. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the meeting minutes for September or November 5th study session are approved. Move on to our last set of meeting minutes, and those are our Planning Commission Meeting from November 7th.
Move to approve the minutes of November 7th.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Vanderwell. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a second by Commissioner Peterson. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, those meeting minutes are approved. Thank you very much for that. The next item is number six, and that's informational items. Do we have any informational items for the commission?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. So that concludes that portion of the agenda. We'll now move into our public hearing items. First up, we're going to take PCN 180005. This is a development agreement amendment for the Wingfield Commons Development.
Chairman Kerry, members of the Planning Commission, I am Ian Crittenan, your senior planner. This is a request to amend the development agreement that was approved on November 13th, 2018, for Wingfield Commons. The site is located, you can see here on the vicinity map, this is the Golden Eagle Regional Park. This parcel is, or this site is a 60-acre parcel and two, two-and-a-half acre parcels, totaling 65 acres. The development agreement was used to address some concurrency issues with the development of Wingfield Commons. The site has some access concerns, as it accesses across BLM land, so it doesn't abut typical city streets. There were some emergency access concerns and some sewer improvement concerns that were, needed to be addressed as part of the city's review of that comprehensive plan and rezoning request that came concurrently with that. And so the development agreement process allowed the city an opportunity to review the applicant's, you know, proposed way to address those things as part of the rezoning and the comprehensive plan amendments. The development agreement was used to accomplish those goals. As approved, the development agreement requires that a CLOMAR be issued prior to the approval of the tentative map. That's not how we would normally handle a CLOMAR. A CLOMAR is a conditional letter of map provision. They are required when an area is being removed from the floodplain. There's a small area in the corner of this site that has some floodplain, it's in the 100-year floodplain, and the applicant is submitting to FEMA to remove that from the Those letters are conditional until the improvements are built, and then they can submit for a letter of map provision where it's officially removed from the floodplain. Our standard practice at the city for tentative map submittals and CLOMARS would require that documentation of submittal to FEMA is given when you submit for a conditional, or for a tentative map. And then there would typically be a condition in the tentative map that says we want an approved CLOMAR prior to the recordation of a final map. And then, yes, the recordation of a final map. The applicant is requesting some amendments to, or an amendment to, the development agreement, which would essentially change the process in the development agreement to be similar or the same as what the city currently requires for standard tentative maps. The Planning Commission's responsibility in reviewing development agreements and amendments to development agreements is to verify consistency with the comprehensive plan. It's staff's opinion that this change will not affect the conformance of this development agreement with the comprehensive plan, and staff is recommending approval of this amendment. That is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask or answer them.
Thank you. Ian, does the commission have any technical questions for staff on this one? Commissioner Peterson.
Ian, I have up here exhibit one, which is the one proposed that you're going to amend. Is that right?
Correct.
And where it's underlined in red, I suppose you want to strike that sentence. Is that what that is?
The strike through is where they're striking it, and the underlined is the new text.
Oh, okay.
So they'll be striking that it's required at the tentative map stage, and that it would need to be, submittal would be to be before the, at the tentative map, and then actual recordation of the final map is where we require that we have.
So, but this amendment would only affect, but they could go ahead with a tentative map, but they can't go ahead with the project until he gets that FEMA report, is that correct?
Correct. And that's standard with any tentative map in the city. This just brings that, this development agreement in to conformance with our standard practice.
Thank you for clearing that up.
No problem.
Okay. Any other technical questions for staff?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Do you happen to know what percentage of that law is still in?
I don't know the percentage, but it's a very small area. The applicant is here, they may have more information along those lines, but it is a small percentage, a very small area.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Blakow. We'll hold off on that question. Any other questions for staff? Okay. So this point, we'll bring up the applicant's representative. Maybe you can address Commissioner Blakow's question on the coverage. Please identify yourself for the record.
No problem, thank you. Clay Jensen with Wingfield, Nevada, the owners of Foothills at Wingfield. Chairman Commissioners, and to answer your question, I don't have an exact percentage, but it's less than 5% of the site. It's probably closer to 2% or 3% of the overall site. A very small corner.
Thank you, Clay. Are there any other questions for the applicant? Reb? Okay. Seeing none, this is a public hearing item. At this point, I'll open up the public hearing on PCN 180005. Are there any members of the public who'd like to provide a public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on this item. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. And I did have a question for staff. Is there any liability to the city with this proposed change in development agreement if, with the CLOMAR process kind of being a little bit different?
Oh, I can't speak to specific liability. I see that the city attorney may be better to address those things.
But I know that this amendment would bring the process for Wingfield Commons into conformance with our standard practice. So any normal tentative map that needed to process a CLOMAR, this is how we would process that tentative map. We would require documentation of submittal to FEMA, and then we would be looking for the actual issued CLOMAR with the final map.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Blakow, sure.
For the 2% to 3% that is still considered in the floodzone, is it continuous, or is it a bunch of little pockets?
It is contiguous. It's mostly in kind of the northeast corner of the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the commission? Okay. How would the commission like to proceed on this item?
Commissioner Peterson.
There is a recommendation in the staff report.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Kerry, I'd like to make one.
Oh, you want to? Are we going to fight all night?
Only if you insist.
Commissioner Peterson, please.
I'll let you do it.
It should be good.
I move to find the amendment number one to the development agreement associated with PCN 18-CO05, consistent with the Sparks Comprehensive Plan, and to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson to approve the development agreement amendment. Is there a second on the motion?
Yeah, a second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakow. Any questions, comments, discussion before we vote? I had some comments for the record. I concur with staff's recommendation. It's always, you know, I know in the past, the city's got in trouble for, you know, approving development and floodzone changes. I appreciate the clarification on that. I concur with staff's that this provides a mechanism to satisfy the concurrency requirements, goal 3.5 and 3.51 of the 2012 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. And I believe that it's consistent with our policy EMG 5 and policy CF1 of our comprehensive plan, so I will be supporting the motion. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve on the table. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you, Ian. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda. This is PCN 160050. This is a development agreement associated with the quarry development. Bringing in the heavy hitters for this one.
Chairman Kerry, members of the Planning Commission, I am Armando Ornelas, the Assistant Community Services Director. This item is also an amendment, an amendment number one to an existing development agreement. In this case, the development agreement was originally approved by, or recommended for approval by the Planning Commission in April of last year, 2018, and it was approved by the city council on June 25th, 2018. When it came through originally, the project was referred to as the quarry. The applicant has renamed the project Five Ridges. And so you'll see reference to that, I think, in the staff report. The site of the project is this parcel that is just under 387 acres, located west of Pyramid Way, and is accessed from Highland Ranch Parkway. And here, if you'll see where my cursor is moving, that is the primary entrance to the project. The original applicant, or more specifically, the original parties to the development agreement were Jacklean Aggregates LLC in the role of, or as the property owner, and QK LLC in the role of master developer, pardon me. QK LLC is now the property owner, and a new entity, Five Ridges Development Company, Inc., is the master developer. As was the case for the Wingfield Commons Development Agreement, this development agreement principally addresses the type and intensity of development that's proposed on the site, and in particular, it also addresses the infrastructure requirements. The city also processed annexation, comprehensive plan, and zoning applications in conjunction with the development agreement, and all of those were approved by the city council on that same date of June 25th, 2018. In the period since approval of the agreement, the master developer has undertaken further analysis of both the site and the land and infrastructure plans for the project. And so this amendment number one to this development agreement is more extensive than the one that you heard earlier this evening. As a result of that additional analysis and some, and the evolution of the project since then, the developer, master developer has identified and is requesting changes to the agreement resulting in this proposed amendment number one. For purposes of what you have in terms of your packet, the clean version, if you will, a version of the agreement with the changes accepted is attached as exhibit number one. A track changes version of the agreement is attached as exhibit number two, and so you will see as, in exhibit number two, the specific wording changes to the agreement. The changes are, to a significant extent, or at least many of them, the result of the applicant's ability to have identified a secondary emergency access for the project. You'll see on the vicinity map, over here to the west of the site, there's an existing water tank, and the master developer intends to bring water to the site from this water tank, and so will require, you know, the installation of that pipeline, and with that, we'll be able to drag a road into the site. And I'll show that to you here. Here's that secondary emergency access road that would come in from the west. So with that having occurred, so just as you may recall, when the Planning Commission and the city council originally heard this development agreement request, that, the location of that secondary access road had not been identified. And so with it having been identified, several other changes were possible. First and foremost, though, with regard to that secondary emergency access, the proposed amendment number one changes the timing for it from prior to the final inspection or certificate of occupancy for the 200th dwelling unit in the project to prior to the first dwelling unit. So that access has to be in place prior to CFO or certificate, or final inspection for the first dwelling unit. The timing for the required widening of Highland Ranch Parkway from Pyramid, the Pyramid Highway to the entrance to the project, to four lanes, is now deferred from whichever of the following would occur first. Issuance of any certificate of occupancy or final inspection for any dwelling unit after 650 units, so with the 651st unit, that would have to be widened to four lanes, or if the level of service for this segment between the Pyramid Highway and the entrance to the project falls below level of service D, or if the intersection of Pyramid Way and Highland Ranch Parkway falls below level of service E. So as was the case on Tuesday at the study session, Transportation Manager Amber Sosa is here if you need to delve into the details of that further. But that's when, that would have to go to four lanes, is whenever any of those three things happens first. In terms of sticking with transportation, the street providing primary access into the site, which is here, and which you can better see here on this, on the land plan, that in the original approval was required to be four lanes, and the reason for that four-lane requirement was not because it was warranted by traffic volumes, but rather because the secondary access was being delayed to after the 200th unit. And so the intent was to provide additional lanes here for not only emergency vehicles to enter the site in the event of a fire, for example, but for residents of the site, visitors, to be able to access. With that secondary emergency access being in place right from the get-go, if you will, again, the traffic volumes don't warrant four lanes here, and so that requirement is being changed to allow only a two-lane street. In terms of other infrastructure requirements, there is a new requirement that the master developer provide the city a hydrology and hydraulic analysis that addresses offsite capacity and sediment transport improvements to the Highland Ranch Parkway and Pyramid Highway culvert crossings. Those improvements identified in that analysis must be completed to the approval of the city engineer prior to the issuance of any building permits for a structure. There's also a requirement that's clarified for a meandering trail-style five-foot, at least five-foot wide sidewalk from the entrance to the project on the primary access. And then in terms of changes that are not infrastructure-related, there's a proposed change to section 3.1, which is the section on permitted uses and density, to clarify that single-family duplex and townhouse residences are permitted residential uses. However, because the site has the designation of intermediate density residential and zoning of SF6 for everything other than this area right along Highland Ranch Parkway, should the master developer wish to do those other two types of uses, the duplex or townhouse uses, that will require both a comp plan amendment and a rezoning of a portion, whatever portion of the site they want to do that on, and that would come back before the Planning Commission and the city council. There's also a change in section 3.1 on permitted uses to explicitly add wireless communication facilities as a permitted use, subject to the standards in our zoning code. I will note that in our zoning code, wireless communication facilities are permitted in all zoning districts, subject to those standards. So the role of the Planning Commission, as Mr. Crittenan addressed earlier for his item, is to review a development agreement for conformance with the comprehensive plan. In the view of city staff, the changes proposed in amendment number one continue to serve that purpose. That's addressed in that latter section of your staff report. Nothing that is being changed, in our view, undermines that or adversely impacts it, and therefore, city staff is recommending that the Planning Commission find the proposed amendment number one in conformance with the comprehensive plan and forward a recommendation approval of the amendment to the city council. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be glad to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Armando. I think due to the complexity of the proposed development agreement, I'll put it up for the commission if you have any technical questions for staff before we... Does the commission have any questions for staff this time? Okay. Maybe we could hear from the applicant's representative on this one.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation, here representing QK LLC. The project applicant and our development team is here tonight. I think Armando did a great job of going through the proposed changes and explaining those, so we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mike. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Peterson.
Mike, Armando, why don't you tell me how far west is the boundary between Sparks and Marshall County?
I'm sorry, I...
How far west is the boundary between Sparks and Marshall County?
Our western boundary is the city limit.
Is what?
Is, it forms the city limit on the western boundary.
Your western boundary.
That's correct.
And then that means that the control and agency of the water tank would be Marshall County?
The water tank is located in Marshall County, it's part of the Sun Valley General Improvement District. And Tamoa. So Tamoa, where...
I want to drive that, and I assume you have the proper authority from them to go ahead and, and the roadway also?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Any other questions for the applicant? Mike, I had a question, and I'm not sure if you know the answer, but I'm kind of interested in, if there's a phasing plan at this point? I know you guys are in pretty, in design. You know, I was just kind of curious, with the 650 units, you know, what would kind of come after that and where those would be?
Sure. And we're still working on finalizing that, but if you look at that plan, each one of those, each separate color is essentially a separate village, and so the phasing would occur within those villages. And as we work with, on the tentative map, that phasing will be spelled out with that application, so.
Okay, so it'd go brown to green to yellow?
Yeah, and that's why I said we'll work out what order those go in, but that's what's being worked on right now with the tentative map.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
I have one real quick.
Sure. Commissioner Blakow.
The planned width of the road, the secondary service road, will that be the same as any other road that will be going?
Yeah, it will be built to city standard for emergency access.
That is a gated road. It's all, an all-weather surface, but it is gated.
Thank you, Commissioner Blakow. All right. At this point, I'll open up the public hearing on this item. Are there any members of the public who'd like to provide a comment on the proposed development agreement? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public comment portion, and we'll bring this back to the commission for further discussion. Are there any other questions for staff on this one? I wanted to follow up with our transportation manager on my question concerning the level of service on the two-lane road as opposed to a four-lane road. I think I got some other transportation questions for you, too.
Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. I believe your question was on the approach road, if reducing it from four lanes to two lanes would change the level of service. The quick answer to that is yes, it would. However, remember that the four lanes was not dictated by level of service, it was dictated for emergency access. So, end of the story, the two-lane road provides adequate level of service. The applicant does have their traffic engineer here. If you'd like specific numbers and specific levels there, he's ready to discuss that. However, it doesn't meet the threshold for requiring four lanes based on traffic.
It's sufficient, in staff's opinion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for that. I had a question concerning, this may be for the applicant's representative. How does 650 additional units on this area, only along the Highlands Ranch, without improvements? What does that do to that intersection and this segment of roadway? Because I know before in the, you know, it's a pretty substantial change from where we were before in the development agreement, that there would be improvements. What does 650 units do in this area?
Yeah, I believe for that kind of in-depth, you'll want to talk to their traffic.
Okay.
Yes, for the record, Paul Saleghi prepared the traffic report. In terms of, so your question is about how that 650 number was set, or what the impacts are on level of service?
What the impacts are in level of service.
What we did was, we backed into that number in terms of knowing where the threshold was. So we maintained, we did, we had our substantial traffic study that we did, and then when, as we set that threshold, we established what, how much available capacity was in the roadway, and our analysis showed that with 650 more, we were going to remain within the level of service thresholds. And so it was a number that we calculated and backed into, and we had shown that it was sustainable, that we would maintain levels of service. that it was, it was sustainable, that we would maintain levels of service.
And we're talking level of service D?
Yes.
Okay. With 650 units. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, I had another question. This one's probably more for staff. I was curious about the, there's, there's a big change with respect to the, I think it's on page 10 where they're talking about that all dwelling units of commercial structures should have fire suppression systems, subject to the approval of of the fire chief. And it was said that it was something about the structures are located within a four-minute travel time. I know in this area, we've, you know, when we meet as the impact fee service area group, you know, one of the key hot-button issues is Fire Station 6 and emergency response times for fire. I was curious, you know, what we've heard from the fire department with respect to that change, and, you know, the way I read it was that we wouldn't be requiring fire suppression systems anymore.
Would you, I'm sorry, Chairman Kerry, would you reference a specific paragraph?
Page 10.
Number three.
Number three, thank you Commissioner Feens.
So presently, the fire suppression systems would be required because it is located outside that four-minute travel time. In the event that there was the addition of a fire station or, you know, the location or something along the line, then they could have relief from that requirement.
Okay, okay, thank you for that clarification. I wasn't reading it that way.
So i- if I may actually address your your previous question also.
Sure.
About the the widening of Highland Ranch Parkway. The reason the amendment is written the way it is, it's really the first of any of those things, those triggers occurring. So I just wanted to, I think it's, you know, Amber addresses, but I think I just wanted to elaborate on that. You know, automatically be would be required with the 651st unit, but in the event that, you know, our staff or RTC staff or, you know, you know, we had concerns about the degradation of either the intersection or that segment of the road occurring, then what we would do is we would ask the applicant to reanalyze level of service, and if that subsequent study found that degradation had occurred, then, you know, those improvements could be required prior to the 651st unit. So I just wanted to make that clear if it wasn't.
Okay, thank you. And I had another question, and I was going from a four-lane primary access road to a two-lane prime access. Does that affect, you know, evacuation routes? I know when we when we saw the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, there was discussion from the fire chief that this was wildland urban interface area, and I know with, you know, what happened in Paradise and, you know, the evacuation zones, is does our fire department feel that that the two-lane road is a is appropriate and even have an evacuation?
So to address sort of the how we arrived at the proposed amendments, Chairman Kerry, when the applicant, you know, made this request, our first discussions were with the fire department. In fact, you know, the applicant had conversations with the fire department prior to actually, you know, the the rest of or other staff engaging. And so I think the short answer really is that yes, the the fire department is finds this proposed change acceptable. The primary access road will still have pullouts, and so that would provide for, you know, the ability of incoming and outgoing traffic to to have, you know, some ability to to maneuver.
Okay.
But yes, the answer is yes, the fire department finds that acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff on on this one? Okay, we'll bring this back to the commission for consideration, possible action.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Peterson?
Being the gentleman I am, I will yield to the lady commissioner on your right.
Okay.
All righty then.
Commissioner Reed.
I move to find amendment number one to the development agreement associated with PCN 16 dash 0050, consistent with the Sparks Comprehensive Plan, and to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Is there a second on the motion? I hope it's Commissioner Peterson with the second after.
If I may, I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions concerning the motion? Before we vote, I just kind of want to make a couple comments to the record. Appreciate the explanation on the roadway and and the fire concerns that I have. I think really, you know, this is a pretty complex amendment to this development agreement, but overall, I think it still satisfies the requirement that we have to make with our comprehensive plan and meeting those those policies for concurrences. So I will be supporting the motion and look forward to seeing what 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 happens with the level of service on that, and I hope staff can keep an eye out on on that. I'm sure you'll get questions, but. Any other comments before the vote? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the call vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Opposed nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you very much for that. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is a public comment. This is our final public comment period of the of the night. Are there any public comment from anybody? Okay, seeing none, and it's really cold. We'll move on to comments from the from the commission. Do we have any comments from from the commission? I had one before we adjourned. I wanted to let the commission know, you probably already heard, but the sixth edition of the regional road impact fee was approved by all the the local jurisdictions, and the fees will be will be going into into effect next month. Wanted to take this opportunity to thank the commission for its work on that project, and thank the RTC staff and the RITAC committee. Given my new professional obligations, I'm not going to be able to continue to serve as this commission's representative on the RITAC moving forward. So I think it'd be good to, maybe at our next meeting, or it could even be our January meeting, to schedule an item to take a look at that appointment, to make sure we have a a representative for for the commission on on RITAC moving forward. And that's all that I had. So any other comments from from the commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll call this adjourned at 6:38 PM. Thank you, everyone. Get warm.